Depression in these seniors, it's something that really is happening on every day. You know, and just them having that connection with another senior is crucial to them. My name is Jaclyn Wilson and I'm a Senior Community Service Leader. Our seniors deal with a lot of problems physically, mentally. To me, it's very rewarding to be able to provide those services to them. This center creates a family atmosphere. The first thing that you feel once you enter these doors is just people smiling at you. You know, you feel, you just feel family. We want you to be here, you know, and we want you to take advantage of what the city is providing for you. Lunch programs, activities, you know, for your mental health, physical health. But I enjoy the most to see transformations. I've seen seniors come in with tears in their face. And then a year from now, you see them and they're lying dancing. They're attending our parties. They are all dressed up, you know, with big smiles. And that's the most beautiful thing I can witness. I have grown a lot. I feel like I have more patience now. It makes me see the city I live in a different way. I love where I live and work.
Hi, I'm Ashi Saragosa. I'm with the City of Corona. The City of Corona recently toured Latitude 36 Foods. They're a Corona food manufacturer that took the Live Work Corona pledge, which shows their commitment to hiring local.
Here in Corona, we do have about 80% of our workforce that works and lives here in Corona. And so that's very, very exciting for us. They get to, you know, work here and then go right back home, you know, just a couple exits away from the freeway. And so that's very, very exciting for them.
They didn't have to worry about commuting to longer distances, which in California can be quite an odyssey. It also helped keep retention. So it was important to our leadership team to keep the business here. And again, it just demonstrates our commitment to continue to grow the business right here in the City of Corona.
Throughout the transition from one location to another, we had a very successful partnership with the City of Corona themselves and a lot of support when it came to, you know, moving to a whole new home. And so that was really exciting for us. And we truly appreciated the support from a structural standpoint.
We appreciate everything the city's done for us as well. And you guys have made yourself very available to us. Again, we actually engaged with the city on a few occasions to really help us navigate. Because there's always some new regulation that comes up. And definitely having someone that's well-versed in those rules and regulations has really helped us smooth the process out a bit for us.
So by taking the pledge, we actually got a lot of other resources, right? That came in with that partnership. They help us with remarketing, right? They really feature us when it comes to, you know, their website, because it really does open up ourselves to different talent. You know, people that maybe haven't heard of Latitude 36 Foods and they're able to show them what we do here locally.
So I would take the pledge and I would encourage every other company to do so, because again, there's a lot of resources available with the city. And the city is a great resource and has been a great resource for Latitude 36 Foods.
So take the pledge today or contact us to learn more.
Good morning, everyone. We're here at City Park. We have our first six street cleanup of 2024.
Everybody and welcome to our City Council meeting. Is Elijah Coombs here? Elijah's going to give us our invocation tonight. And Elijah, afterwards, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on up, bud.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today so grateful that we have the privilege of being here. We know that our freedom is not by coincidence, but as we were reminded so much of last week, that it's by a cost. Lord, we thank you for the blood you shed and the blood shed by so many so that we could have a free country. God, I pray that you'd bless this meeting and help us to have a wonderful evening. Thank you for the great weather you've provided us with. And for all those in attendance, bless them on their way home as well. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to convene an open session. Call the meeting to order. Ms. Edwards, can you please read the special instructions?
Yes, Mayor. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the City Council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Mayor, there were two revisions to the agenda. Agenda item 9.1, the title was revised and Exhibit 1 was added. And Agenda Item 9.4 has been removed from the agenda.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edwards. Okay, we have a few proclamations and presentations this evening. Our first one is going to our Garretson Heroes. Go Gators! I'd like to invite Ivan Armus, Roberto Hernandez, and Margarita Soto to the podium for the commendation. Come on down, you guys. Come on down, guys. Good, that's all right. More the merrier. Are you Ivan?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, sir. Good job. Come on up, guys. All right, so we got a recognition for Ivan, Roberto, and Margarita. But I'm only going to read Ivan's because they're basically all the same. Okay? So, "The City Council of the City of Corona, California is proud to recognize and commend Ivan Armus. Whereas on August 26, 2025, during third and fourth grade lunch at Garrettson Elementary School, one of their fourth grade students began choking on a piece of a hard shell taco. His friend Roberto Hernandez immediately ran to seek help from the new supervisor, Margarita Soto, informing her that a student was choking. Margarita quickly radioed for assistance from the Health Clerk and School Administration as she rushed towards the student. And whereas hearing the urgent call over the radio, the head custodian Ivan Armus immediately ran to the lunch area. He saw the student gasping for air and without hesitation began performing the Heimlich maneuver. As the student's condition worsened and blood began coming from his nose, Mr. Armus did not give up. He continued his lifesaving maneuver until the piece of food was dislodged from the student's throat. And whereas, if not for Robert and Margarita's quick action and Mr. Armus' courage and persistence, we fear the outcome could have been very different. Their bravery, judgment, and fast response truly saved a life. And whereas, at Garrettson, they are one big family. Titles don't define them. They all look out for each other and treat each and every scholar if they were their own. When the principal once again thanked Mr. Armus what he had done, his response was simple yet powerful, and I quote verbatim, "Anytime, I will protect and look out for these kids. Garrettson is my second home." The moment was a powerful testament to the culture that they have at Garrettson Elementary, a place where staff and students alike rise as heroes for one another. Whereas Ivan Armus selflessly and without hesitation responded to the child choking and initiated lifesaving actions. Ivan's heroic actions contributed significantly to a positive outcome. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Steiner, on behalf of the Corona City Council, do hereby recognize with respect and gratitude the heroic actions and selfless courage of Ivan Armus for the act of saving a life. Presented this 17th of September, 2025." Do you have a Roberto? Is that you? Is that you, bro? You got one too. Margarita? All right, great job. Would you guys like to get a picture in front of the podium? All right, let's do that.
And this is our student, Hammerson.
You're the guy. All right, buddy. Congratulations for getting your life saved. No more talking. Soft shelf nail on, brother. You're good, buddy. You're good. You're amongst friends, all right? I feel like crying at a lot of these meetings, too, man. One more picture.
Thank you.
Good job. All right. Next up, I would like to invite Joe Dominguez, American Legion 742 Post, to the podium to receive the next proclamation. Come on up, guys. All right. So National POW MIA Recognition Day, whereas the United States National POW MIA Recognition Day is observed across the nation on the 3rd Friday of September of each year. This year, that date is September 19, 2025. And whereas, according to the Department of Defense, more than 80,000 American service members are missing from previous conflicts and 38,000 are estimated to be recoverable. And whereas, we acknowledge with deep respect those Americans who were held in captivity and those whose fates have never been resolved, remembering the indignities of brutalities they suffered. And whereas, we recognize that the families of these courageous individuals have endured the pain of separation and the anguish of uncertainty, bearing a heavy burden as they await the return of their loved ones or seek closure in solace through the knowledge that their sacrifices are not forgotten. And whereas, the National POW MIA Recognition Day serves as a solemn reminder of our duty to honor and remember all those who have served in uniform and to ensure that no one is left behind or forgotten, reaffirming our commitment to the values of loyalty, duty, and respect for those who have borne the cost of our liberty. Therefore, I, Jim Steiner, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim September 19, 2025, is National POW MIA Recognition Day in the city in honor of those who became prisoners of war and those who remain missing in action, encouraging our citizens to fly the POW MIA flag as a tribute. There you go, Boom. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, everybody. I do talk a lot, but I thank you. Thank you for this and thank you for the recognition of all POW MIA and the MIA crew that's out there. And just remember, the families are still awaiting their return and, you know, they haven't said their goodbyes yet. So just remember them, keep them in your purse.
All right, thanks, brother. You guys want to get a quick picture? Come on up.
In front of the podium.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I would like to invite the Santiago High School Girls Track Team and Coaches to the podium for this recognition. Comes the superstars. Come on up. All right. Braylene Combs, which one are you? That's what I thought. I've seen your face a few times in newspapers and stuff. Okay, so there are six recognitions. I'm not going to read every part of every one because it's saying the same thing, but we'll start with Braylene. All right, "City Council of the City of Corona, California is proud to recognize and commend Braylene Combs, Santiago High School Girls Track Team. Whereas this Corona City Council wishes to recognize Braylene Combs for her determination and commitment to the talented Santiago High School Girls Track Team. And whereas Braylene Combs captured the CIFSS championship in the 800 meter and the 1600 meter," very impressive, "then went on to win the Southern Section Masters Meet in the 1600 meter. Her most amazing victory was at the CIF State Championship in Clovis, where she won the 1600 meter with an epic finish. Braylene's time in the 1600 meter is the fastest in the United States for the class of 2026." That's incredible. Wow. Of course, I'm not done yet. "Whereas their season didn't end on CIF State Championships. A few weeks later, the same relay team traveled to Oregon and won the national championship in the 4x800 meter at the Nike Outdoor Nationals. Earlier in March, three of these same athletes, Combs, Davis, and Sampson, we're going to be honoring them too, along with Riley Blade, who claimed a national indoor championship in the distance medley relay in New York. And whereas Braylene has committed to run track and cross-country in the University of Arkansas." Going far. So on behalf of myself and the entire City Council, we are super proud of you and best of luck in Arkansas. Okay, now that's for you. Now I have, let me see up, please. All right. So Taylor. Where you at, Taylor? Okay. So, "We love you just as much, but it says the same stuff, so I'm not gonna..." And Nicole? Same goes for you. All right, this one, I was just, one thing I wanted to read. Kinsley? Right, Kinsley? Check this out. Witkovich. Not bad, huh? Yeah. Yeah. So same kind of stuff, but the one thing that was different on this one, "Whereas Kinsley was also a state champion with the Sharks in soccer, and she may be the first girl to ever win state in three different sports, cross-country, soccer, and track. Kinsley deserves to be celebrated as one of the greatest athletes in the inland empire history before she goes off to play D1 soccer at Lipscomb in Tennessee next year." Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. All right. Coach Ricky?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to read yours. I know you're here, I know you're here just for the girls.
Thank you.
But, you know, it takes a great coach, a great leader, and a great mentor to help these young ladies achieve the success that they've achieved. So, good job. Would you like to say a few words on behalf of your team?
Just a couple.
Sure.
On behalf of our head coach, Mike Bozio, we thank you so much for the recognition. Obviously, these girls put in a lot of hard work. And to be, you know, state champions on the 4x8 relay. But not only that, it was these four plus Riley Blade, five distance girls went to state and finished second as a team in the state of California, which is amazing when you think of how many schools compete at the state championship. So not only did they get the relay title, but to finish second place as a team with just five distance girls was very, very impressive for these young ladies. And then the Nike Indoor National Championship back in March was an amazing opportunity for these girls. And they stepped up. They flew all the way across the country to face the top teams in the nation and to go there and to win and have the fastest time in the nation, which was just phenomenal. And then at Nike Outdoor Nationals in Oregon, again, stepping up on the highest stage and being able to perform at that high level again, it just goes to show you these girls, their grit, their work ethic, and their determination, representing the City of Corona to the highest. I mean, with a national-level spotlight, the City of Corona has been, because of these young ladies. And they're all seniors, so they're going to attempt to do it again this season. So right now, we're in the middle of cross-country season and these girls are going to go after a state title in cross-country. And then we're going to try to go back to New York again for indoors and kind of do it all over again this season. So keep your eye out for these young ladies. They got a lot of enthusiasm and excitement to just keep pushing for higher and greater goals. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's get a quick picture. All right.
All right, how about a round of applause, guys? Good job.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the commendation, proclamation, or recognition?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards.
All right, thank you. I would like to invite Nancy Jimenez Hernandez to the podium to provide an update on the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District update. Hi, Nancy.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Mayor Steiner, Vice Mayor Casillas, and Council and community. I want to take a second and say thank you so much for the privilege of serving the city in this capacity. It's been a busy time with Northwest. We have some slides to update you on what's been going on. See this? Want to move that one? Am I supposed to? Okay. Ah! And let's go back. Okay. Lower trap counts. So we have lower-than-average temperatures have prevailed throughout the year, which has resulted in lower mosquito abundance. The landscape maintenance technicians have been working with the city and landscape companies to repair broken water boxes. Yay! And third, highlight, service requests. To date, the district has handled 367 service requests, mosquitoes 108, rats 83, bees 125, fish 29, and other 22. 68% lower compared to the five-year average. They've been very, very busy. And again, if you want to contact them directly, 951-340-9792. However, we have a surprise guest. Eric Bolehills with Northwest is here in case you have some questions that you might want to ask him. Eric, want to join me really quick?
My colleagues have any questions?
Well, I, thank you for joining us. I think the thing that everyone wants to, that I get from this is, it's the mosquitoes and like, how can you help folks? Is this the number that folks would call? And what kind of help can they expect?
Yeah, so they could call the number or visit our website and do a request for service. We'd like to get out there within about 24 hours for mosquito calls. But in the meantime, what we suggest residents do, do a thorough inspection around your house. Any standing water more than a couple ounces that can be there for longer than two to three days is a potential mosquito biting site. So if you could go ahead and remove that, you should see a reduction in mosquitoes. And then also use an EPA-registered insect repellent such as DEET. And whatever you use, make sure you read the label and apply it correctly to make sure you have full protection. But, yep, that's the number you could call or visiting our website. We also have helpful hints and flyers on the website to help residents out.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Were any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. Thank you. I frequently recommend folks when they, when they ask about getting bit. And I say, hey, you know, if you call, the technician will come. And even though you think you don't have any water around your house, I guarantee they're going to find places that you haven't looked. And sure enough, neighbor came back over and said, just want to say thank you. They pointed out three or four things that I hadn't even thought about. And now I'll pay more attention to it. So it was great and also a little bit of an education moment because your technician is very well-versed in how far mosquitoes can travel, which is, with the mosquitoes biting in your backyard.
Yeah, they only fly about 300 feet.
So they are, they're not from, you know, down the road. They're from your neighbors or from you. They're most likely your mosquitoes, your own, your own personal mosquitoes. So I just want to say thank you and appreciate the extra effort that you and your technicians do. So thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy, thank you for the update.
On behalf of the district, I want to say thank you to the city as well. We've been working in conjunction with them closely with your Code Enforcement and Public Works to get these items mitigated so we don't have to go out there continuously. We get them repaired so we don't have to go out there and it's not a continuous issue. So on behalf of the district, we appreciate the partnership. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on this presentation?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, let's get into our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council actions. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the City Council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion?
No, sir.
None from me. Ms., let's see.
So moved.
Hold on a second. Ms. Edwards, does anybody from the public would like to pull a consent item?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
I'll take that motion. All right. Last and Tom, please vote. Okay, that passes. Now moving on to communications from the public. Persons wishing to address the City Council are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comments only, which means it is limited to items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council that are not listed on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. The City Council will appreciate your cooperation in keeping your comments brief. Please observe a three-minute limit for communication. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have five speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay, so you can come on up to the podium or wait in your seat until the podium's clear. And first up, looks like Mr. McCoy.
It's good. Does it work? Yeah, okay. I don't know if it's good, you guys know my name or not, but... So I wanted to talk about two things. First one being pulled agenda items. 9.4 was pulled. I understand why. But I kind of wanted to emphasize, as you guys may or may not know, I run Citizens for Corona, which is one of our public outreach groups that allows the public to get involved with city government and what's going on, specifically on the agenda and the city business. And the agenda generally is fixed. It's supposed to be fixed 72 hours prior. So when, for instance, we post the agenda, we usually wait till 24 hours before, just so we know everything on the agenda is there. Now, 9.4 was pulled. I understand why. But I would ask that there's a little more consideration because this is about the third time, I think, where we've seen something that maybe the public is going to be interested in, and they are, and there's a huge response. And our clerk gets emails and that all kind of gets flushed. So you guys don't really get an opportunity to hear how the public really feels about that. Now, this time, it's very obvious what it... Now, this time, it's, it's very obvious what the issue is as far as there being some kind of a public charge for citizens of the city on foothill. But whatever it happens to be, I would ask that if you're going to pull an item, please, if you have the temerity to put it on the, on the agenda, please keep it on there unless, you know, don't pull it just because you're concerned about public comment. If it's a reason like today, that's fine. But I have seen, like I said, this is about the third time where I've seen something pulled, and there is a bunch of public response, and then nobody gets to hear it. So I think that's important. The other part of this does tie to 9.4, but it also ties in general. The biggest thing that we hear about, and we've got about 9,000 users, so this is like 5% of the city population. The biggest complaint are city fees going up. We had an economic downturn. We've had a loss of jobs, and the number one thing people are complaining about is the fact that they feel like there's a never-ending increase in fees. There's a never-ending increase in the cost of services as far as trash and water and these things. And there, the raises are much higher than what we would consider to be, you know, keeping up with inflation. You know, it's not the Consumer Price Index. It's higher than that. And it's, it's rough on folks. And I see the impact and I hear that, which is why there was so much outrage over 9.4, I think. Is just, I would ask you to please be more considerate about what you're doing and what you're raising, and make that your last option, not your first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Fuller.
Howdy, folks. There's this picture of me that the city clerk saw. This is gonna put up there on the screen. I think. There we go. I see you're putting it on the overhead projector. Come up. It's a picture of me taken on June the 14th at the corner of Rimpaun, Ontario, when there was a No Kings protest against the convicted felon that occupies our White House. There were about 2,000 or so similar protests all across the country that day. Estimated there were well over 5 million people showed up. That one was in the middle of the day on Saturday, and it was followed up by another one in Riverside later that afternoon. I made both of them. And as for that one-by-two piece of lumber that I use holding up that sign, that stick has been with me in several events, and I put a notch in the handle whenever I show up someplace. There are currently 14 notches in that handle, six for me marching in various pride parades, and eight for me participating in various protests against the convicted felon. I am figuring that after October the 18th, I'll have two more. And I have also talked with the police chief about this, and he and I have had a good conversation. On June the 14th, there were, there were a good vigilance from the police department, and we kept it peaceful and nonviolent. And I have just talked to him this evening, and I've told him that October 18th, when there are more of these protests scheduled, that I will be a force for loud enthusiasm, but also for peaceful nonviolence. And so we've had a good conversation about that. I appreciate the diligence of the police department. I think they're a fine group of people. The truth of the matter is that we are rapidly losing any semblance of freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of religion, rule of law, due process. And there are millions of us across the country gonna keep showing up in protest as long as the convicted felon is in the White House. We're just going to keep doing it. It's gonna last that long. If any of you have trouble reading that sign in that picture, because the type may not have a lot of contrast, it said, "Yo, Trump, go to hell." I don't know if I'll use that same sign on the next time on October 18th. But with the convicted felon and the corrupt gang of suck-up sycophants that hang around him, there's always plenty of new material. So I welcome all of you to show up with us on the 18th. I will be there. And I'll do everything I can to be there. Last time I brought my grandson along. We had a granddad, grandson day. Had a great time. And we will be there protesting until the loss of our democracy comes to an end. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thanks, Tom. Next up, Ms. Maddie.
This takes a whole different turn. Good evening, Mayor Steiner, Vice Mayor Casillas, and council members. Tonight, I really want to talk about something that's amazing that we have going on in Corona. Bless you. It's a program called TIP. And TIP stands for Trauma Intervention Program. Their motto is "Citizens Helping Citizens in Crisis." And if we have a red shirt that says, because you can't really read it very well, the Trauma Intervention Program is a group of specially-trained citizen volunteers called by police officers, firefighters, and hospital personnel to provide emotional and practical support to victims of traumatic events and their families in the hours following the tragedy. I want to say straight out that the recruiter is Bob Offe. His phone number is 951-314-8000. Our trainer is Becky Gano, and there'll be additional trainers from the national level. I'm speaking because I've had, I have gotten their services, and I started their program in the middle of the night. I had to have somebody come and deal with me to take somebody off of life support. That's a very difficult decision to make, and they were there for me, fully dressed. So there's a lot of information, if you can see on the brochure, and I don't want to read it to you because there's a whole lot of information. But they respond 24/7, 365 days a year, or 366. Respond within 20 minutes of being called. They're first established in San Diego in 1996. And Corona will be celebrating their 30th anniversary on March 3rd, 2026. So we gotta mark that one down for something special. Then there is a website that we have. If you'll take the times and look up www.tipcorona.org, it has a whole lot of valuable information. There were 445 total calls for 2024, 34 in July, and 256 that were year-to-date. And one of the things that I found interesting was there's a section that's very pertinent that's about how to talk to children regarding the recent shootings. So please do go through that and see what else they have. Their latest, their next program begins on October 2nd. And they have a complete list of the schedule as Ms. Edwards shows here. The class size is limited, and there's reservations required. Again, for information, call Bob Offe, 951-314-8000. And it's to register, www.tipcorona.org. And thank you, Becky, for giving me all the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Paxton. So yeah, our TIP volunteers are just an amazing selfless group of individuals. And if you, if you're looking to volunteer for something in our community, this is, this is an incredible opportunity. And it's not for everybody either. You gotta have a certain type of personality. But they do, they do train you to help you what to say, what not to say. And they just provide a, just a significant support for not only our citizens, but also our police and firefighters. So thank you. Next up to speak, please. Come on down.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, city council, vice mayor, mayor, and city staff. I'm here on behalf of Grid Alternatives Inland Empire, which is the largest nonprofit organization and solar contractor. We provide renewable technologies that are inclusive of everyone despite socioeconomic status, living in disadvantaged communities, which is a portion of what the city of Corona also encompasses. And we have completed over 4,000 installations throughout the Inland Empire. And currently, we have funding available for city of Corona residents along with Golden State funds, which would allow us to be able to also complete any solar readiness portion of things. So anything from roof repairs, tree trimmings, and/or electrical upgrades that are needed in order to install the solar system. Grid Alternatives is funded by the California Public Utilities Commission, so these installations are done at no cost to homeowners. And oftentimes, the majority of the homeowners that we serve are on fixed incomes, you know, oftentimes not able to turn on their ACs because of fear of rising electric costs. Along with the Energy for All program, we also provide solar training for those that are interested in entering the solar industry, completely at no cost as well. But yeah, I mean, aside from sharing our program right now, we, I also wanted to provide information letting you know that we collaborate with municipalities on grant opportunities with our development team, and wanted to see if you all were aware of the Extreme Heat and Community Resilience Program grant that is currently, that is going to be opening up and available for the city of Corona, and to see if it was in your radar. We were just recent, we, last year, we were, round one, we were awarded 3.48 million in collaboration with the Torres Martinez Tribe. And so happy to provide, we'd enjoy connecting with any city staff to share, answer any questions regarding the program, and to see if we can potentially connect with Housing Department, Sustainability Department, to provide these services for city of Corona residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your name for the record?
Victoria Pacheco.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Hi, Joe.
Good evening. Joe Morgan, 2063 Ren. It's been an interesting couple of weeks. Really, you know, I guess I helped with a couple of these videos, but actually going down and seeing on the ground what you guys did to McKinley, and then seeing what you're doing to the Corona Mall, and seeing what you're doing to Cortez, and seeing how you're dealing with it disturbs me greatly. As a longtime resident here, as somebody who had Mr. Cortez as my, as my eighth-grade teacher, to watch how you guys have been running over, it's mob-style. It'd be a shame if something happened to your little shop. Just would eat up the rest of the buildings all around there. You know, it's largely the same way you guys have dealt with the Padillas. Well, the same way. Very mafia-esque. Very mafia-esque. You're just gonna do what you're gonna do. It makes me wonder why you guys are up there. What do you care about? Why are you up there? Why are you here? Tom, why, why are you here? What do you care about? You don't, you keep talking about citizens.
Let him finish, Tom.
You know, you keep talking about downtown, you know, but you don't mind running over the Cortezes. They're downtown. All the businesses are down there. They're all downtown. Okay? So I don't see you giving a shit about anything. I don't see you giving a shit about the corner of your house, Garrettson and Grand. Just me, random dude that lives in the area. I drive by your house. There's 20 signs on the poles in front of your house. Just me randomly driving around in my truck. I stopped and picked them up. You couldn't be bothered to pick them up. What do you care about? You know, I'm tired of hearing you yap about stuff that you don't do anything about. I walked for you. I went door-to-door and vouched for you. And, and my other person, who I consider to be a friend, I've stuck up for Ms. Casillas countless times, in public and in private, defended your integrity, and talked about how you're principled. You can disagree with whatever you say, but I never thought that you said things in a cynical fashion, or said things that you didn't believe. I never thought that for one second. And I was, I was immensely proud of the night that you stood here and went toe-to-toe with Mr. Speak arguing for a year term limit. I believed you. I thought you actually meant what you said. I had an interesting conversation with Mr. Richards one time about, you know, he, he thought it was amusing that if I ever got on the council, like, what I would change. You know, how I would change. And, and, and I said, well, which core beliefs do you think I would give up? Which ones? I can tell you none of them. I'm not giving up on any of my core beliefs. I'm not sure what I believe anymore. I'm not sure why you guys are even there.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to, oh, that was it, okay. Moving on to a public hearing. Okay, public hearing election for annexation number 42 into Community Facilities District Number 2016-3, Maintenance Services. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? Seeing none, camera off the hook, public hearing is now open. The following questions are for Ms. Edwards. Do you have proof of publication and mailing of the notice of the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Have any written protests been received?
No, we have not received any written protest.
Are there any registered voters within the area to be annexed to the CFD? And if so, how many?
There are no registered voters.
Have the owners of all taxable property proposed to be annexed to the CFD agreed to hold the special election on September 17th, 2025?
Yes, they have.
Do you agree to hold the special election on September 17th, 2025?
Yes, I do.
Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment or has questions regarding this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. So this item will require two motions. So I need a motion for Resolution 2025-095.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. I'll second. Please vote. All right, that passes. Ms. Edwards, have you received any ballots? And have canvassed the ballots and tallied the results?
Yes, I have. I received one ballot, and all votes are cast in favor of loving the special taxes.
Okay, so I'll need a motion on Resolution 2025-096.
Move to approve.
And I'll second. Please vote. All right. Okay, moving on to this one. So this is the Affordable Housing Density Bonus 2024-0001 for 57 residential condominiums consisting of three affordable housing units located at 1717 Via Del Rio in the R3 Multiple Family Residential Zone, applicant Meritage Homes of California, Inc. So the applicant requested that the public hearing on Item 8.2 through 8.4 be continued to the city council meeting on October 1st, 2025. And a big reason for that was Councilman DeDario, this is in his district, and he really wanted to be here to chime in on the, on the topic. So before I open the public hearing, does the council want to consider this continuance or have staff report from Planning Commission? Join, Coletta.
Support the continuance.
Okay, okay. So the public hearing is now open. I still gotta go through this, even though it's gonna be continued, but the public can provide testimony tonight on Items 8.2 to 8.4, or wait until the hearing at the next council meeting. Does anybody from the public want to speak on this item this evening? Mister, we got one? Okay, so yeah, just whenever that's opened up, you come on down.
Hello again. I just, really, I just want to talk about the same thing that we talk about with ever, whenever we talk about affordable housing, which is the fact that, and, and I realize that we came in a little late on this, but I, I can't help but get frustrated at the fact that we talk about affordable housing. We approve these units, but the developers are always doing the bare minimum. They're always doing the three units, the four units, the eight units, the one unit. And I understand that they need to, they need to make their nut on these two. So I'm not, I'm not against them doing this format. I'm not against our, our planning, approving these and sending them to you. I know this is gonna pass. But at what point are we gonna like really get serious about doing something about affordable housing instead of these onesies, twosies, threesies? I would really love to see us work in some way to find a developer or a way that we can, we can put some type of emphasis in the fact that we want more than two or three of these. And keep in mind that the way that these work, you probably already know this, but the way that these work is that the people that buy these low-cost houses, they only get a portion of their equity when they come out. So it's not like they're building generational wealth. It's not like they're actually getting any help out of this. When they sell it, they're gonna get a little chunk of it, but they're still forced to sell it at a lower cost. So it's, it's really just rental housing. It's just, gives them a little bit of equity at the end of it. So if we can find a way of doing actual low-cost housing instead of these, okay, developer, we're gonna tell you it's affordable. You can tell everybody you're building affordable housing. We can do what we need to to do the Kabuki dance for the state. But then at the end of the day, nobody's really winning. Corona's not winning. Certainly, the folks in this community that are looking to get their first house are not winning because they're not going to be able to build any wealth off of this. The equity just isn't gonna be there. So I would really ask that you either talk to planning or talk to whoever in our, in our city can work with some developers to see if we can develop something where it's a whole low- it's a whole low-cost housing development that's going to be built with the idea of housing more people that really can get a leg up for the next generation, for their kids and their grandkids, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
I had some issues with this, but before I begin, I want to get a little bit of clarification. I want to know what the vision is for Corona. Yes, I know it's you belong here, but who are you really targeting to move in? We know that we have all these million-dollar houses or close to million-dollar houses. That's really not affordable for most people. I'm gonna explain that till I'm blue in the face. If you're looking at people that are just, again, the lower, as I explained, coming out of college, they may be making $100,000 a year, but they've got college loans, they've got a car loan. So as far as spendable cash, they don't have it. And I went over by the, our wonderful Tricor disaster, and I happened to notice that they are, on their website, it says they're starting at $38,90 a month to rent, to rent. That comes out to $46,680 a year just for rent. And that's probably the small EDUs because they said it's starting at. That's ridiculous, in my opinion. And again, I come from, as I've said before, 1988. I bought my first home. Back then, I was probably making $47,000, which was pretty good in 1988. And I bought my first home at $110,000. It was a, it was a townhouse, not a condo. There was nobody below me, nobody above me. I had one joint wall. We had patios or we had balconies. And so it was $110,000, which is about 2.25 times the amount of what I made a year. So I'm playing with numbers and the average, the current college graduates in 2024 were $90,000. So start playing with the numbers and it really doesn't make a lot of sense. You might have some that dual incomes, you might not. So what about the people, you know, that, that are starting out? Or what about those that are single and they're established, but they can't afford it? What about those that are widowed, divorced, retired with, on a fixed income like me? I want to start seeing numbers because we're buying into things and I just don't really understand how that translates. And the other concerns involve parking. There's only a hun, what is it? 109 parking spaces? It's, the, the position where it's at is right next to a school. So I want to know how there's gonna be enough available parking. I was there Sunday and both sides of the streets were packed on a Sunday, not even a school day. So that's something that I don't know if you're really being realistic, saying let's just put some numbers up there. I just don't understand how this is all going to work. So again, I want to see some numbers to see mortgages, to see who can really afford it. And being that I'm on a fixed income, I don't even think I could afford to buy something like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm not sure why we're continuing this. I mean, it's just, it's, it seems like posturing. Like, I'm not sure exactly what he's gonna bring to the conversation. These things always pass. You know, what ought to happen is a conversation about why these developers feel the need to just burn a few units. And, and if we couldn't put those to some other better use, just say, hey, tell you what, instead of just burning these and not actually making any money off of them, why don't you just sell them at market rate and give us a requisite amount and put it towards a real project? To, to Matty's point, you know, that we can actually get some real housing instead of pretend affordable housing, because that's all these are. I know they're just, you know, I'm not hating the player, I'm hating the game, but there should be some smarter way that we could get about this and that they can do what they need to do and we can do what we need to do. Because we do need to have money in projects and we do need to have affordable housing. But to Chris's point, this isn't really affordable housing and this doesn't really help a lot of people out. And doesn't actually help the problem, you know? I don't really have a problem with this project in general. This thing's been talked about and planned out for a decade or better, you know? I mean, it's, it's in zone, it's, it's appropriate. Because they have the low-income element to it, you know, the housing, the parking isn't ideal, you know? That was discussed pretty thoroughly at planning and there's ways around that. But just, you should just go ahead and vote for this thing tonight because it's gonna happen. Nothing's gonna change, you know? Nobody's gonna bring up any, any silver bullet that's gonna change anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, another speaker? Come on up, sir.
Hello. My name is Ray Howell and I live very close to this project. So my question's for you. There's a lot of stuff pointed out. I didn't see any visitor parking within that condominium. Were there? I saw nothing. Some of these, these are rhetorical questions. These are things to think about. Where is the parking gonna happen during construction? Where is that gonna happen? You know, Yobontra, not in my neighborhood? Guess what? It's my neighborhood. So some of your other solutions were, oh, permit parking. What does permit parking require? 67% of the neighborhood. Guess what? It doesn't affect 67% of the neighborhood. It affects maybe 20 at the most. Parking, you already know that parking is horrendous. And you admitted it before I even spoke last time. You already know this. You've got a ton of red curb everywhere. So I'm assuming that, is that code for entrances and exits? Some of those are gonna disappear with that church. But parking is crazy. I don't know which plan you picked, but you had one that was considered tandem parking. How ridiculous is that? So if it's two people in a family, maybe you can plan who's gonna be parked first and second. What happens later on when this condo becomes, what, what happens with 50% of condos? What happens in 10, 15 years? The renters. So there goes the neighborhood. You're gonna have problems or people are gonna have issues. So guess what? They're gonna park on the street. That's the problem. So one of the other suggestions was permit parking. Okay? Like I said, permit parking, 67%. I think I read a stipulation where the city council can actually stipulate an area to be permit parking. That would be helpful because I can't get the votes for what you're talking about. This is, you know, just because the governor wants to push through affordable housing, which is fine. I have no issues with affordable housing. But a sensible plan? That's a different story. I don't see this being a sensible plan. This is just something being railroaded through. Again, it's in my neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Welcome.
Dan Watson. I live across the street from this project. Council, staff, mayor, thanks for the opportunity. I came to the planning meeting when this was presented and the subject was mostly parking. You're probably familiar with Avenida Del Vista and the apartments and the cars and the mattresses and the refrigerators and the wheelchair without any wheels, the boxes, the fast food trash and all the stuff that goes with the parking. We know that with this plan, as mentioned, the tandem parking, the no visitor parking, actually there are 13 spaces planned. I talked to one of the planners. He said, well, there are two, two spaces for each unit in the garages. And they showed me a map, a drawing of this. I thought, where are they? Oh, they're tandem. So they've got these rules changes with the affordable housing where things can be closer together. So you have a 28-foot driveway. You've got two cars in a, in a tandem garage. They're gonna have to back out, trade places, and there's no place to park with that car. How many, you're gonna have to have two people to, to move the cars or you're gonna be blocking the driveways? This is, you know, as somebody else mentioned, this is really not a good solution. Two-car garages are fine, but 2/3 of these units are, of the 57 units have tandem parking. 18 of them have double, regular double-car garages. The other thing is, we know they're gonna, you know, with this, they're gonna overflow. Already, the streets around there, Barrel, where the last speaker lives, I believe, Sapphire, Aquamarine, they're gonna get the overflow. I'm a block away in the other direction. My end of the block's not too bad, but Kirkwood, the west end of Burn Drive, they get parking from the school already. The people from the Planning Commission, some of them went over there at pickup time from the Corneet Elementary and saw the impact of, of the traffic there. Pickup times are gonna be horrendous when this parking in the church parking lot goes away. And I'm concerned about that, too. So this is, this needs some modification.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Was there any other speakers for tonight? Okay. So I'll just say that I think all of us agree with everything all of you said. So, but we'll talk about that more on October 1st when the public hearing continues. So is there a motion to keep the public hearing open and continue items 8.2 to 8.4 in October, to October 1st, 2025?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, Tom and Wes, please vote. Okay, that passes. We'll see you on October 1st. Okay, administrative reports request by Councilmember Richens to discuss Save the Corona Clock. Joel Belding, our Economic Development Director, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I have a very brief presentation and some good news. So the Sixth Street clock has been saved. So we're here just to provide you with an update and confirmation that it does exist still. So formerly on the SGC sushi site, but it certainly predates that particular use in that building. The clock was removed. It's successfully stored in a secured location. So we're here just to relay that information to you tonight and then also seek some guidance as to whether you have any particular reuse ideas for this. Certainly at the center of the circle, we have a couple of city-owned buildings. We have the library today, the Hub project, which is growing as we speak, and then a future project at the former North Mall site that will be building some new buildings there and could end up there. But there's certainly plenty of opportunities to showcase the clock, either on the exterior of a building within this area or inside a building, the Heritage Room, for example, or other locations within the city. So we're here to present this information and then seek whatever guidance you'd like to share with staff so that we can move forward with the final disposition for the clock. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards in the public on this?
Mayor, yes, I have two speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Welcome back.
Come back, just come here for just more and more posturing over history. Like, you're worried about a clock. The clock's been saved, so the breathless exhortation that has been saved is sitting by the back fence at the corporate yard. I guess it's saved. It's sitting on a pallet or something. You're worried about a clock. You're worried about a clock. You're not worried about downtown, you know, like saving anything else. You're not as worried about the depot that got torn down, you know? You guys passed on that. You're gonna save a clock. So just know, you know, nobody's gonna give a shit about the clock. Everybody's gonna talk about what happened in the depot. Everybody's gonna talk about what happened in the downtown. How did we lose our downtown? But hey, we're gonna have a clock. You could posture about it all you want. You don't give a shit about history. You don't give a shit about the downtown, but you're worried about a clock. Keep on posturing.
Thank you. Tom, this was your item. Did you want to make any comments on it?
Yeah, I do.
Chris, did you want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. Forgot there was two speakers. Sorry.
As some of you know, I was on the Historic Preservation Society Board. And I know the society and specifically Wes have been trying for years to get the Tepan Restaurant to hand this over and allow us to restore it, just the historic society, not anything to do with the city. And I, and I, again, I agree with some of what Joe is saying as far as, you know, like with the depot, that we've gotta, we've gotta do a better job of preserving our history and we can't just, you know, throw it in a depot or throw it in a container and hope that there's enough, something salvageable that we can use some years later. With this clock, I, I mean, my recommendation would be that you guys, included in the encumbrances for whoever is going to end up developing downtown, that they have to put it on the corner, whether they put a turret on the corner like it used to be or they do some other type of facade, that that's a part of what they have to do. They have to pay for the restoration so the city doesn't have to pay for it. And they have to, you know, display it someplace where it's gonna be prominent. I, you know, we've been trying to get this thing over the finish line for what, Wes? A decade? Something like that? It would be really nice to get this somewhere and let somebody else pay the bill for it, since they're gonna make a ton of money on the development. Let's let them spend 10, 20 grand and, and do this right and just include it in an encumbrance. So thank you.
Okay, now, do you have any comments?
Yeah. I, the clock is special. I, I know that there's people in the community that are just disgruntled and quite honestly, they don't know what they're talking about. But the clock is special. The clock, the clock was installed by Corona firefighter Pearl Glass. He was one of the pioneers of Corona. For over 100 years, 100 years, that clock has stood on each corner of Sixth and Main. It's, it's been under a number of banks. It's been under a drugstore. It's been under a restaurant. It's been under a sushi restaurant, but the clock has never gone away. And as we revitalize the downtown and do something about the downtown and build a great downtown, I think the clock will complement it greatly. So I don't want it to go in the library or the Heritage Room. I don't think that's the place for it. I think the clock has made its reputation standing the test of time on the corner of Sixth and Main. So whether it's at the Hub or future developments such as Mr. McCoy suggested, it, it needs to be in that area there. And it needs to be fixed up. And I'm perfectly fine with city money fixing it up. The city owns the clock. Why shouldn't they pay for it? But it needs to stand for another 100 years. And it needs to be something that future historians talk about 100 years from now. And for the record, I'm fine with the love of Corona history. And for those that aren't, they're just failures in life. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else want to comment on this clock?
I think the failure had a chance to talk and now he's done.
All right. Wes, do you want to comment on the clock?
Yeah, just really quick. I, I think, you know, Tom, Tom has good, good history of the clock. I think it's important that we've, we've, now it's at least safeguarded so we can be, it can be repaired. I have passed on the information I've collected over the years on what it would take to, to restore it. I'm fine with, with waiting until we figure out what's gonna happen at Sixth and Main in order to go forward. That way we can figure out exactly where it's gonna go. And, and if we get to that point and, you know, it's been, it's been sitting on that corner in the shape that it's been in for many, many years. And, and at least it's in a place now that I always worried, you know, one day I was gonna drive down Sixth Street and see it gone. Because it is a, it's a pretty, pretty rare and expensive clock. And I'm just, just glad that it's, it's being safeguarded and that we have a, at least a plan to go forward to find a way to put it back. I think that's the sentiment, at least from, I think from Tom and I, that, regardless of what happens, that when Sixth and Main gets to the point where, where we're starting to do the, it should be on a building. Which building it goes on, I think that's a decision that we'll, we'll make at a future date. But that, the building it goes on, whoever owns that building or whoever's doing the, the work there will hopefully pay for the restoration. I think it's about, I think the last time I checked, about $25,000, between 25 and 30. So.
I thought the staff reports at 15. I thought the staff report said 15.
Well, they must've got another bid, but that's good. That means they got it cheaper than I did, that's great.
Is it, is it 15,000 to fix it up?
We don't have final numbers yet, but we're, once we, the restoration cost and the installation cost, we're gonna take a close look at.
Yeah, that's just the clock itself, so.
Okay, so I think receiving file, there's enough direction there, okay. 9.2 is consider option of resolutions and other official actions authorizing issuance of the Corona Utility Authority 2025 Water Revenue Bonds and 2025 Wastewater Revenue Bonds. Kim Sitin, our Finance Director, will present this item. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for a chance to speak about this item tonight. And the item seeks approval of two resolutions. The first will authorize the issuance of up to $45 million in water revenue bonds. And the second resolution will authorize the issuance of up to $36 million in wastewater revenue bonds. The bond issuance discussion was included with the rate study analysis that was approved in December of 2024. And the bond proceeds will help to fund capital improvement projects such as the construction of the Glen Ivy Water Treatment Plant, Hidden Springs Road Water Line Construction, construction of the Sierra del Oro Lift Station and Pipelines, and installation of the Water Reclamation Facility Number One, compliance flow meter. And a full list of the capital projects included for funding is shown in the staff report. A staff from multiple departments worked together to bring this plan forward, including outside consultants that we worked with for underwriting our municipal advisor, bond counsel, and disclosure counsel. The financing team made a presentation to Standard and Poor's on September 8th. And yesterday, we received the bond rating information. It wasn't available to us at the time the staff report was prepared. But the water bonds were rated at AA state, AA positive, excuse me. So that was a small increase from what we previously had at AA stable. And the wastewater bonds were reaffirmed with a AA plus rating. And these are very good ratings for a municipal agency of our size. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you have. We also have our municipal advisor and bond counsel available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Kim. Thank you, Kim. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards in the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Questions or comments from my colleagues? Have a motion? Wes and Jackie, please vote.
I'm getting there, Sylvia, my screen went dark.
All right, that's approved. 9.3, partnership with OC Marathon LLC to host the Corona 5000 on March 21st, 2026. Donna Finch, our Community Services Director, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council. I am really excited to be here tonight to present this item. It's something that our team has been working on for several months. We've been in discussions with the OC Marathon and trying to find a way to bring an event over here to the historic Grand Circle. It's a really unique amenity that we have here in the city. And this is a really great opportunity for us to be able to really maximize that amenity and also a nod to our history of the Corona road races that lead back to over 100 years ago. So our ask for the council tonight is that you approve a memorandum of understanding with the OC Marathon LLC for the Corona 5000 road race. So to start, this event is really being brought to you because it is something that we've been working on just through our strategic plan. As you know, we have a goal of sense of place. And we have an initiative within the strategic plan to increase our large-scale recreation events, to provide both social and economic benefits to the community. One of the events specifically highlighted in the strategic plan is an opportunity to bring a 5K or 10K race to the city. And again, we are looking at the circle, thank you, as the place to be able to do that. And another part of this initiative is to really look at ways to establish processes to expand events through community partnerships. And this is something that we have initiated with our discussions with the OC Marathon. So just to provide a little bit of history of the Corona road races, as many of you know, about 110 years ago, we had official, actual road races here in Corona. Those started in September of 1913. That was our inaugural, inaugural road race on Grand Boulevard. It included three races with fierce competition and cash prizes. The first of those races was a light car race. It was 37 laps with a $70 prize. Then there was a medium car race, 91 laps with a $3,000 prize. And then the free-for-all, which was 110 laps with a $5,200 prize. The event was very successful, well-attended. So it was brought back the next year in November of 1914 for the second road race. That one was just one free-for-all race with 100 laps. It was 300 miles with an improved track and extra safety measures. And it had a $12,000 purse with $4,000 going to the first prize. The next year, there was severe flooding. It washed out the roads and the race plans were abandoned. But it was brought back for a third year in April of 1916. That one, leading up to the race, had a pre-qualifier. So only cars that could reach speeds of 100 miles per hour or greater were able to participate. So there were 12 contenders. Unfortunately, that event ended in tragedy. One of the contenders crashed into the audience, so the race was abandoned. And we no longer had the road races here in Corona. So why do we wanna bring the road race back to Corona? As I mentioned in my intro, we are really looking at ways to bring bold, exciting opportunities back here to the community, event opportunities through partnerships with other organizations. We have this great history and heritage here. And like I mentioned, this unique amenity with the circle on Grand Boulevard. This would be the 110th anniversary of the final road race. So it'd be a really great opportunity to bring back a road race in a different form through a 5K, engaging our local runners, blending road race history with today's 5K runners, again, promoting our unique circle. It is a nearly perfect, three-mile diameter circle. So again, something that we really are excited about, being able to really maximize this opportunity and introduce a new generation of the Corona road race history to our residents. It also helps promote health and wellness. It improves physical health, supports mental health, helps individuals achieve personal goals. Going out and running a race is a really exciting achievement and accomplishment, creates a fun and dynamic atmosphere, and again, creates a sense of accomplishment. And then it really brings in those social and economic benefits to the community. So it helps us expand on our large-scale community events. It's family-friendly, it will introduce what we believe is new visitors, bring new people into Corona, help introduce them to the heritage and history of our city, and help promote our brand, both for the city as well as for local business sponsors and fostering additional community connections. So this event, as you can imagine, there's a lot of logistics and planning that is involved in getting this type of activity coordinated. We were very fortunate to have a connection to the OC Marathon through the staff in our special events team. They started discussions with the OC Marathon back at the beginning of this year. And to our surprise and benefit, the OC Marathon was very interested in bringing an event to the Inland Empire, and they were very interested in the circle. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the representatives from the OC Marathon. We have Gary Kutcher and Lisa Skolman. And they're gonna talk about their experience planning these types of races and what they plan to do here in Corona.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council, thank you so much for having us. My name is Gary Kutcher, I'm the race director for the OC Marathon, have been for about 16 years. And this is Lisa Skolman, who does our Director of Operations for all of our events, we do other events as well. The OC Marathon was established in 2003. A number of community leaders came together with the goal of raising money for children's charities, local children's charities. In December of '04, we had our first race. And those charities that participated that year, we helped them raise and we donated $300,000 to those charities that very first year. Since then, our event has had over a quarter million finishers in the marathon, half marathon, and 5K. And we're nearing 100,000 finishers in our Kids Run the OC Final Mile, which is an event that we do in 150 schools or so, give or take each year, in Orange County. And, and each year, we go to all these different running conferences, making sure that we're up to speed on all the latest technologies, crowd management, the safety precautions, all these different things that are, that are ever-changing in today's environment. So we're, we're really up to speed on all of those things and continue to do so. It's a, it's a, it's a real big event. So the first weekend in May is always the OC Marathon Running Festival. And we're now preparing for next year already. It includes a two-day Health and Fitness Expo with 60 different exhibitors that come there. We have, on Saturday morning, we have that Kids Run with 7,000 kids expected next year. And then that evening, we have a Sunset OC 5K, which will have about 5,000 runners in it. The next morning, bright and early, we have the OC Marathon and Half Marathon that starts down in Newport, comes back to the fairgrounds. We bus about 8,000 people to that start line. They make their way back. We go through four cities. We have as many as 10 different jurisdictional coordination with, with police, fire permitting, and everything else that goes on with that. And so, and in addition to that, we have big post-race festivals that occur at the end of each of those races. So it's a big party, we have a, it's called Celebrate OC as well. So it's a, it's a festival of Orange County, Celebrate OC. And we have bands that come in and do all of that. Overall, next week, next year's event will have 25,000-plus participants and tens of thousands of spectators that line our courses. We do go through four different cities. We close 26 miles of roads, some for a very short period of time, some more than that. And in addition to that, we, we reach out to our community. We're very much involved in the community in so many different ways. Running has really taken off right now. It's a great time to launch a new event. Running is just in this new boom right now. And so the run clubs have become gigantic. And we have 150 run clubs that we work with. We also have what's called the OC Corporate Challenge, where we work with different businesses in Orange County to have them bring, they get their employees involved with the race. And then we have a competition to see who's the OC's fittest firms. It's a lot of fun, we give awards at our banquets. In addition, going back to our roots with the charity, every year we work with, with between 25 and 30 different charities that we bring in. And with that, through our platform, our registration platform, they have a great opportunity to fundraise through our platform. We also provide discounted entries. And then we, we have all kinds of other benefits. They have a meeting area, Charity Village after the race. So it's, it's a really fun event there as well. We've been doing this, oh, I didn't mean to do that, but we also have a huge database to help bring people in. We have over 300,000 total in our database and 120,000 in Southern California. So it's a, we have a great database of runners. We also do other events. I mentioned that Lisa and Jody do all of our other events. Kids Run, I mentioned, we have the OC Fair Fund Run in partnership with the OC Fair and Event Center. We've been doing that for, this is our 17th year. We did it just a few weeks ago. We had about 3,300 this year. It's always right around that number. And the runners get to run through the entire fairgrounds before the fair opens. They run past the barn, they go through the Speedway. Those that are running fast, they just, they just really do it quickly. And then there is those who want to do our detours to fund. We have four different locations where they can stop, play games, win a stuffed animal. It's a, it's a real fun, family-type of event. And now it's a 5K and a one mile. In December, we have our Run for a Cause. And it's keeping with that whole charitable aspect. When you run for a cause, you can run for a cause. We're changing venues this year, so it's been a little bit more exciting for us. But we'll have about 4,000 at the Great Park this year. So it's a fun thing. So the event overview for this, and we're really excited about this. In 1916 was the last of the Corona road races. And it was on that perfect circle showed just moments ago, designed by H.C. Kellogg. And imagine, 100,000 people, you guys know that, but 100,000 people came to watch these car races in 1916. It's, it's just amazing. So 110 years later, that road can come alive again with racers, but there'll be runners this time. And lots of spectators coming out enjoying these, these fast runners. But a lot of families will be out there running and walking, enjoying the Grand Boulevard. The course basically will start right in front of the Historic Civic Center. It will go east, turn left on Grand Boulevard. It will make one loop of the Grand Boulevard, the three miles. Turn left back on Sixth Street and finish right back in front of Historic Civic Center again. And we'll have food and drink and everything for them when they finish. It's gonna be a great day out there. We will have a pack-up pickup the day before at some place to be determined here in Corona. And then, I'm a real big history buff as well. So seeing all the, the historical artwork from the postcards and everything else, it's really exciting. So the medals, the signs, the imagery that we see will be really playing homage to those type of symbols and artwork from back then.
Oh, wait, I think you skipped. Oh, there we go, okay. So the Corona 5000 is truly a win-win partnership between the city of Corona and the OC Marathon team. The city will provide the foundation and the venue, while the OC Marathon will bring the proven expertise in producing world-class running events. On the OC Marathon side, our team handles execution, securing route permits, coordinating with traffic control, police, and emergency services, and managing, managing all logistics. We oversee marketing and registrations, keep residents and businesses informed, and provide the participant experience with medals, shirts, and bibs, and the fun day. We will also manage vendors, staffing, volunteers to ensure a smooth and exciting inaugural race day. We've been working hand-in-hand for a while with city departments from police, public works, and recreation services to define responsibilities and ensure alignment of the partnership. The city's section or responsibilities would be facilities and permits, public safety, traffic reviews, parking signage, assisting with some road closure equipment, and cross-marketing on city channels. And of course, the city is hosting the post-event celebration on the Historic Civic Center lawn, which makes for a true community gathering. Together, this partnership creates an event that not only celebrates Corona's history and heritage, but also promotes health, wellness, and meaningful community and economic impact. For our parking, we've got just over 910 spaces right next to the venue, across from City Hall in Buena Vista and Orange Grove High School. With an estimated first-year 2,500 runners and the typical 2.7-ish,-ish participants per car, that's close to 925 cars. We've nearly covered that right there, right adjacent to the venue. On top of that, we're adding an Uber and Lyft drop-off area with a location to be determined, to give people more options. And of course, the park-and-ride is a short jog away, which adds another 300 spaces. All parking will be free, well-signed and posted on the event website and emailed to all registrants so participants know exactly where to go and how to get here. Our outreach for this event will begin early. In October, we'll launch the event website. And by November, registration will be open and sponsorship outreach will be underway. In January, we start digital notification to apartments, schools, churches, leagues, and local businesses so the community has plenty of advance notice. February will focus on direct communications with homeowners. February will focus on direct communications with homeowners, and we will also push wayfinding and closure details to mapping platforms like Waze, Google, and Apple Maps. Then in March, we will layer multiple notifications with traffic warning signs, postcards, no parking signs posted 72 hours before race day. This approach ensures residents and businesses are, will be well-informed at every step.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the other Gary, Lieutenant Gary Griffiths. He's gonna talk about the traffic plan. We've been working closely with PD and our Traffic Division and Public Works to develop a traffic plan that will provide the most minimal of impacts to road closure times.
Lieutenant, how are you, sir?
Good.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Mayor and council, I'll just briefly go over three slides talking about the traffic plan. Like Ms. Finch said, our goal is to minimize the traffic impacts on the residents and travelers while maximizing the safety for the runners. This is a quick timeline of the actual race day. We'd expect Grand Circle to be completely closed, the entire circle to be closed at 8:00 AM for the start of the race. A 5K is a really fast race. Some of your fastest runners will be done in 14 to 15 minutes. So it's, we talked about maybe doing roll enclosures, but it would not work in this instance. The race begins at about 8:30. That gives us 30 minutes to get the roads clear. And then, as you see there at the bottom, 10:00 AM, we expect the entire Grand Boulevard to be open. So about a two-hour time period is where we have some portion of Grand Boulevard closed. That would be closed across traffic as well as driving on Grand. And then, two hours after that, we'll conclude our post-event celebration. So this is, this gives you an idea of our plans. Like Gary mentioned, our, the race will start in front of the Historic Civic Center and then make that left turn onto Grand and continue clockwise all the way around Grand Boulevard. We divided the circle up into four quadrants to be able to get that first quadrant open when the last part of the race crosses North Main. So once that first quadrant is clear from the race, we'll have some following vehicles or some following personnel. We'll be able to open Grand Boulevard, and people can get in and out and cross and drive on Grand. We expect that to be about 9:15 AM, so it's just about an hour and 15 minutes total. And then it'll continue around Quadrant 2, Quadrant 3, Quadrant 4, until the race makes that final left turn onto Historic, or onto Sixth Street in front of the Historic Civic Center. Any walkers who are slow, slower or fall behind the back end of the race will be directed onto the sidewalk if they fall behind the race, Tom. And they'll be directed onto the sidewalk to finish with following traffic laws. Emergency personnel with the Fire Department, I spoke with the Fire Department, they will have either a backfill, an engine to be in the circle for any emergencies that appear with residents or businesses inside the circle during that brief time that we have Grand Boulevard closed. As well as PD will have a police officer or two designated just for responding to calls for service within the circle. Obviously, we'll have multiple, this is logistically pretty complicated, so we'll have a lot of police personnel out there to run the traffic control and ensure safety of the actual race. AMR, the hospital's in the circle, so that presents its own logistical problems. So we'll be in contact with AMR, Fire, the hospital, to ensure that they have some access points. Officers will have the ability to pause the race if we need to get an ambulance across Grand to either access the interior or to get out of Grand from the hospital. Ideally, we wouldn't want to do that, but if, obviously, for an ambulance in an emergency situation, we would do that. And then finally, for the residents inside of Grand, if they need to get out, this is part of the notification process, we would direct them to the 91 Freeway. Luckily, that on-ramp at Main Street is inside the circle, so they can drive from their house if they need to go out of town, or if they need to get out of the circle to do some shopping or something, and they have to leave within that hour and 15 minutes where they can't cross any portion of Grand, they can get on the 91 Freeway either east or west, get them out of the circle, and then out of town. Again, that hour, after that hour and 15 minutes, that first quadrant will be open, and it'll continue to open as the race progresses. And then I'll turn it back over to Donna Finch for the post-event celebration.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Gary. So as mentioned, we will be, the city will be hosting a post-event celebration at the end of the race. The hours for that will be 8:30 AM until 12:00 noon, right on the HCC front lawn. Some of the elements that we plan to include in that celebration include the start and finish line, the award area. We'll be giving awards for second and third male and female runners. We'll also have sponsor and exhibit booths, DJ entertainment, food vendors, and a beer garden. I do want to note that we will be working closely with the business community, so we are starting meetings with our economic development team, and we'll be reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we start early with notifying the businesses that are inside the circle, trying to minimize their impacts as best as possible. Some of the businesses that operate during those morning hours, such as Silver Dollar Pancake House, Baker's Dozen Donuts, Starbucks, they will receive an invite to actually set up a booth at the event to be able to sell their products. So hopefully, it will be a great benefit to them, and they won't have as significant impacts as they would if they were not involved. We have also already been in touch with the hospital. We have reached out to them to let them know that we are planning this event that would include a full closure of the circle. We do have three entry routes for emergency vehicles identified into the circle if need be, at North and South Main, as well as at East Grand. That was communicated to the hospital. They did not express any initial concerns, and we will continue to have meetings with them to go through the logistics of that. They also have expressed interest in potentially setting up a first aid booth, or a few first aid booths around the race route. So that's something that we are excited to hear, that they are interested in being involved in the race and being a part of it. So we are very optimistic and hopeful that this is gonna be a really great event, will not have significant impacts to the community. We are gonna do our best to try and engage those businesses and residents to make sure that we bring them out and make this a fun and successful event that we can hopefully continue for several years to come. So again, our ask is that the city council approve the MOU with the OC Marathon for the Corona 5000 race, and we would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, just a couple. Lieutenant, I think maybe you might be the best person to answer this. I know that when we've had other closures for fireworks at Santana Park, that one of the issues that folks that live around there, well, I used to live around there for 21 years, was that the barricades were slow to come down. So I'm worried about so many, so many barricades, so many blockages, and I get it's only gonna be for an hour and a half, so I wanted to know, how will those barricades come down? And what's the timing and what's the kind of staffing plan for that? I know it's not necessarily your, you know, your area, but I'm just trying to think of, since you'll be either moving folks that aren't keeping up with the pace off the track, off the track, you know, how would that be handled?
So the plan right now is, because we have to have all of Grand shut down for a period of time, we need personnel to man all those intersections and alleyways. With a combination of sworn police officers at those major intersections and like moderate type streets, with some of our non-s sworn staff, like parking enforcement or community service officers, in addition to like some explorers and cadets, and then some volunteers that the race provides, or the city is gonna provide, for maybe some of the minor like alleys and driveways, they'll just be assigned to that intersection. So once the race gets past that North Main, that first quadrant, people in that quadrant will be notified by some motor officers. It's okay to break down your barricades, you can open up the street. And then obviously, they'll put a hard closure at North Main to not let anybody continue on Grand.
Okay. Great. And then my other question, I really didn't have any other questions, that was the other one. I think that the financial part, I think I understand how the reimbursements are gonna work. It's a partnership. I love the idea. As someone who, you know, loved the idea of the races, in fact, I, this is something that, you know, various volunteer groups that I've been in for many, many years, something we've tried to figure out, and I'm glad that somebody that has a lot of experience in doing this is gonna take the helm or at least show us how it's done, so to speak. But I think that people will see this as a great event, and yes, there'll be some inconveniences, but the fact that people are coming to our city to, you know, to experience it and to help celebrate some of Corona history, I think there's, it's a win-win for everybody. So I'm clearly in support.
All right. Well, so this was approved unanimously from our Parks and Rec Commission. I did have a communication with Parks and Rec Commissioner Olson, who had some of the concerns about, you know, about the hospital and how to get to the hospital, and first responders, and outreach and things like that, but it sounds like you've done a really good job starting to address that stuff. And then I realized that until the MOU is approved by us, then we, then you really go to work. So I thank you all very much. I think this is great that we're gonna be doing this. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, thank you. Do we have a motion from any of my colleagues?
Second.
Wes and Jackie, please vote. All right. Passes. 9.4 was polled. Legislative matters, none. Reports from boards and commissions, library, board of trustees, received and filed, the library board of trustees, report update for August 26, 2025. Let's see. Planning Housing Commission, nothing. Parks and Rec Commission, received and filed, the Parks and Rec Report Update for September 9, 2025. Regional meetings, we have several. Update from Vice Mayor Jackie Casillas on the Western Riverside County of Governments RCOG from September 8.
So this is fun. I'm the first chair of WR Cog, and the chair Brenna Dunstead could not attend, so I chaired my first WR Cog meeting, and that was, I didn't screw it up, so it was good. We had reports out from the regional streetlight program, and then we had an annual update, and then we had a TUMF program status overview. Of note, the TUMF program has collected 1.3 billion and reimbursed 1.2 billion towards transportation infrastructure since the program's inception in 2003. This has resulted in over 150 projects being completed with assistance from TUMF. That's a big deal. These are fees collected from developers that go back into local infrastructure. We have benefited from the TUMF program here locally, but these are monies that stay within our TUMF Northwest Zone for our own projects. It's a big deal. So we're celebrating 150 projects completion through TUMF assistance. And we authorized to proceed with capital improvements on 1955 Chicago Avenue. So WR Cog has purchased a building and is working to sublease our current building, get out of that lease, and get into a more sustainable, better financial situation for the agency, which the agency's doing fine. It's just thinking long-term about not paying lease and rather having tenants in a building and being able to rely less on member agency dues. So this is one step towards that. And that was the WR Cog meeting of September 8.
Okay. And now you're up for the Cal Cities Riverside County Division General Membership Meeting, also on September 8. That was a busy day for you.
It was. And this is actually my second-to-last meeting as president of the division. It was a true delight to have Christian Dorte be our, to be our clerk for the meeting. Thank you very much, Jacob. And Chelsea McKeesy was also there. It was wonderful to have Team Corona represent. We, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. The item of note is that we had Cal Fire Battalion Chief come and present to us about the fire, what goes into creating the fire severity maps for the state of California, and the step-by-step methodology of those new maps that then impact our residents and impact zoning and impact insurance. So it's all, it's wonky, it's complicated, but when you sit through it, you recognize just how difficult it is to face the realities of climate change. So, that's it. Mayor, that's all I have to report out.
All right. Councilman Richards will provide an update from, let's see, Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency meeting on September 11.
Well, the good engineers are proceeding forward with preserving the kangaroo rats. The $2.55 million budget was approved for next year, so they're going forward on that. And then, really, if anything noticed that I saw value in the meeting was they authorized the purchase of a Land Pride rotary mower. It's 84-inch in width with a cutting inch of 2 inches. It's a standard ASAE, category 4 driveline with two-man, with a two-plate slip clutch. So that's what I keep at the house myself, so that was really cool. And then they approved a 36-inch and an 84-inch auger, so for a two-man machine, so they can make some pretty cool holes. These augers are top-of-the-line, powder-coated, and solid steel. So we're going forward there at the RCHCA, buying some pretty cool equipment, and that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilmember speaks, gonna provide an update on Southern California Association of Government Transportation Committee meeting on September 4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not too many things. I mean, there was a few hours of talking, but it was mostly on budget impacts to transportation. There were several cuts in order to meet the $20 billion estimated deficit. They included $7.5 billion in revenue and borrowing solutions. We talked a little bit about the fact that there were no additional fees or additional EV and hybrid changes to any of the existing laws. That was something that was being proposed. However, there are two bills that were passed in a budget trailer, and those of you that don't know what a budget trailer bill is, it's a basically blank check that we all get to pay, where the governor and legislature can decide what's in that after the fact. So there was at least two housing bills that came forward that we don't know what they quite mean yet, so until they get out of, or they get signed by the governor, and I'll learn more about that at the next meeting. We also sat through a transportation safety regional existing conditions report that was as boring as it sounded. And as you all know, that even with the amount of money that's being contributed under SB1, that there are still lots of things to fix. However, there was a, in both of my transportation meetings this month, there was a concerted effort from everybody that I spoke, or everybody that spoke to us in both of those meetings, that revenue is significantly down, especially in Southern California. And most of that is due to the fact that people are driving EVs and hybrids and getting great mileage and not paying gas tax. So we're seeing the numbers for the gas tax, I think, down for the beginning of this year, down almost 9%. They're projecting that it might be as close as 12 or 15 by the end of the year. So as we all have more transportation needs and less and less money come to us, it'll be interesting to see how the state and the feds react to that. And then, that's it. Thank you.
And you also have an update from your RCTC meeting on September 10.
Yeah, the biggest or most complex part of the meeting was the fact that if you drive a zero-mission vehicle, and you have one of those pretty little stickers on the back of your car, it will no longer be valid as of October 1st. There was some kind of, you know, they thought there was gonna be some latch-ditch effort at the federal level to exempt cars, however, it is not. And the toll lanes will be eliminating that 50% discount that you get on the 91 and the discount that you get on the 15, and I still haven't heard that there's any kind of reprieve that will come from that. So most likely, that will end. So if you do have that, there will be a little bit of a grace period, especially for the 91 toll lanes. I think they're looking at a 60-day grace period to ensure that people understand. However, they will not be, they will be noting that on your account if you do have it, but I hope that folks learn about that. The other part was potential tracking efforts for the reauthorization of cap and trade. And, let's see, the other one that was, we awarded a contract to HNTB for express lanes consulting on the 91-15 and the 15 connector. We did do the agreement with the Transportation Agency, Transportation Corridor Agency, that's the 241-91 expressway, basically the connector that connects the 241 to the 91. After probably two years' worth of negotiations, the TCA, OCTA, and RCTC agreed to the governance of that. And it's very complicated. It sounds great if you're sitting on Windy Ridge and you're trying to get to Corona on the 241, and you're sitting there on one of the four-mile backups to try and get on the 91, that it sounds great that you would have an opportunity to go directly onto the 91 express lanes. However, as you all know, 'cause you listen to me every couple of months when I talk about the fact that the prices of the toll lanes are based on how busy the toll lanes are. So when we did the 15 and 91 connector, we were able to extend part of the toll lanes on the 91, past the 15, and that created less of a bottleneck, and that lowered the price. So those of you that are coming home on the eastbound 91, it used to be $20, you know, at that exit, now it's, the average is about $9. So big decrease because they were able to open the mouth a little bit wider to let the rat get swallowed by the snake. However, now you're gonna be putting up to 1,500 cars an hour into the toll lanes, which will jack up the rate again. So the idea was that we limit cars based on the amount of cars that are on that connector. It's a very complicated system. It'll start from It'll start from, there'll be a separate connector toll rate just to use that connector, and if cars exceed, I think it's 800 cars an hour, the prices will increase. If it gets over 1,000 cars an hour, it will go to HOV-only. If it gets over 1,200 cars an hour, it goes to buses-only, and if it gets to 1,500, it completely closes. So RCTC, OCTA, and TCA agree to a governance committee to continue to review this process. I know that something needs to happen there. This is probably, this is a project that has been funded and been waiting by TCA for the past seven years. They've been pushing this since I got on council. Their new executive director did a really good job of basically coming up and giving kind of a little bit of a mea culpa. They started off in not a great position, trying to kind of force us and push this on forward. And the one thing I was very happy to get as part of that agreement is that they've agreed to pay for any impact they have to the city of Corona. So they will pay any fair share of any impacts that this, if it ends up forcing additional cars off the 91 onto the Green River, and I was very happy to get that. That was something I'd been pushing for for the past three years, and happy to see that that made it into the final version of the agreement. And I think that was it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards from the public for these regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
All right, thank you. City Attorney reports and comments, Mr. Durle, do you have any comments? City Manager's reports and comments, Mr. Ellis?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Any of my colleagues have anything they want to say?
I did want to, and I forgot to mention this earlier, Mr. Mayor, but if okay, I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Kathy Wright. Kathy was a president, longtime president of the Friends, and she passed away on her birthday a couple days ago, and she was a really neat lady. She was very passionate about the library, made sure that there was always folks, she was always one of those, she came off as this mix of the best teacher you ever had, somebody that really cared about what you were learning about and what you cared about, and she was, when I was on the library board, she was one of the most amazing partners, people that really believed in the library and believed what the Friends could do and help in the library, and I was very, very sad to hear of her passing, so I would appreciate it if you could. Thank you, sir.
All right, so we will adjourn this meeting in the memory of Kathy Wright. The next meeting is the October 1 of the city council, this meeting is adjourned.